Well, I think we'll get underway here. Now that we have the global family of the Internet with us.
Now, where is he?
Oh, I don't know who signs up.
Oh, okay.
It's just on Facebook Live. Last week, we had someone from Tanzania.
Okay, that's what I was...
Really?
Awesome.
Yeah. Each week, I think it will be necessary to start with two things: a disclaimer and then corrections and additions. Because I keep studying, so then there are things that sound and look a little different than they did last week. We may never get out of Chapter 1, but you'll know more than you did. First, the disclaimer. And I think it's important to say this: we cannot study women of the Bible, and particularly women of the Old Testament, without almost immediately coming across issues of sexual abuse and violence. It simply is in nearly every story of women in the Old Testament. And in the background, at least, of some of the New Testament stories as well. So if that is an issue for anyone, you need to know that that may come along, and you may need to be prepared to respond as you need to to that. And it's true in Ruth, without question, both within the text and then contextually as well. It's true linguistically, it's true historically, and it's true contextually as well. So I just want you to be clear about that, and that is in simply the nature of the material. The second thing is just a reminder: if you have hopes that a Bible study will simplify the text for you, you're in the wrong class. My job is to complexify the text, because it's complex. Simplification is comfortable and inaccurate. So just keep that in mind. And we're going to talk about all the ways that it can be complexified, and that's as it should be. So just keep that in mind. When you walk out of here thinking, "How in the world can he get all of that out of four words?" This is why I get the big money. And if you want simple Bible studies, they exist by the thousands online. You can save your gas. But I don't think they're very interesting or helpful. So that's the second thing. Third thing is an idea that I would like to pursue, but not without your permission. I got to wondering this week if it would be possible for us to hear from one of our Jewish sisters and brothers and a contemporary Jewish reading of the Book of Ruth. Because remember, for one thing, it shows up in a different place in the Tanakh, what we might call the Hebrew Bible, than it does in our Christian scriptures. It shows up in a different location in the Old Testament, and that reflects a different understanding of what the book is about and what it's for. It shows up in the wisdom literature, in the Tanakh, not in the history books. There are reasons for that. So I'd like to see if someone from Temple Israel either would come over on a Thursday and talk with us about Ruth, or more likely, I suspect, if we could arrange a time when we might go over there to 132nd and Pacific and have a conversation. But I think that would be fascinating. We might also, then down the line, be able to arrange for a conversation about how a Muslim might read the text, because they do. Ruth is a subject for conversation in Muslim theology as well. So I think that'd be interesting, but I'm not going to invite guests and visitors unless you think it's a good idea. So thoughts?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know if it'll happen, but I want to at least pursue the possibility, if it's okay. Okay, I will do that. I'm pretty sure that with our Jewish friends, well, I'm pretty sure that with either community, we'll be able to figure out a conversation. Let's see. Okay, that's enough of the preliminaries. Now, you have a handout that I put together kind of on the fly during the week. You know, I'm in full research mode, so I'm a little bit giddy. I enjoy that. Reconnecting with some of the resources from years ago, and then some newer resources as well. But there are a variety of ways in which the Book of Ruth is read, both popularly and in scholarly circles. And these are some of them. And I think that it's helpful to think in terms of a set of lenses, that you can look at a text through a particular set of lenses, and you'll see some things and not others. I would not suggest that any one of these is the right set or the only set. They overlap, they complement each other, they contradict each other. What I would say is that this provides more of a layered understanding of what is in the text. So one set of lenses is the genre set. What kind of book is Ruth? If it is history, and by location, we can see that in the Christian canon, if it's history, that's one thing. If it's wisdom literature, like Proverbs or Song of Solomon, those are two very different kinds of wisdom literature, but they're wisdom literature. That's in a different place, and perhaps with a different purpose, and you look for different things. If it is a folk tale or a morality tale, kind of like Jonah is, for example, well, that maybe is a little bit different. If it's a sort of a tract for the times that has a particular point or points to make, which may be like Jonah as well, then that's yet another thing. Ruth is all those things, to one degree or another. But it makes a difference how you look at it. The Book of Ruth is the subject of extensive and energetic feminist, both biblical and theological, study. Huge amounts of material and resources, and master's theses, and doctoral dissertations, and books, and articles. I mean, it's just, you know, I can hardly stand it. I mean, it's so much fun. But with this set of lenses, it doesn't mean that everyone who looks through those lenses sees the same thing. So for some feminists, Ruth and Naomi are heroes. This is the only, one of the two biblical books, at least in the Tanakh, named for women. And really, the only one where the women really drive the action. Esther somewhat, but not in the same way. Other feminists read the text, and they see Ruth and Naomi and the other women as pawns of men. Ruth's voice, for example, disappears after the middle of Chapter 3. She doesn't talk anymore. What does that mean? Does it mean that in the end Boaz and the rest of the men assert their role, and order is restored, and on we go? There are clear connections to other women in the Bible, and especially the Old Testament. As a matter of fact, Leah and Rachel are mentioned explicitly. Al, I know you went looking up who Perez was.
Of course.
I heard about that. I mean, that's part of the connection, part of the genealogy. So this is what can be called a variety of intertextuality, taking one Old Testament text about women and laying it next to another and seeing what kind of conversation they're having. It may well be, and some scholars are not convinced, but taken by the idea that this is the only Old Testament book written by a woman or women. That may be. Some feminists see Ruth as the initiator of the action, some see her as, at best, a passive participant, and at worst, a kind of a pawn. So the feminist lens. We can read it as a story about Exodus and exile. This may not have dawned on you immediately, but how do the Hebrews, how do Abraham's people get to Egypt? There's a famine, and they go looking for food. How do Alimelech and Naomi get to Moab? There's a famine, and they go looking for food. And they go across the river. And then eventually, it appears that God acts. Naomi says, "The Lord has provided food in Bethlehem," and they return. In the exile, they're taken away, and they return. And it's always to the land, the promised land, the land of Israel. When you have a leaving and a returning, somebody's thinking about the exile, about the Babylonian exile.
Is this the same famine of Joseph's time?
No, but it's a parallel. The point that some scholars would make is, when you have people leaving Israel because of a famine and returning, that sounds like the Exodus. So no, there's about 400 years or more difference, if we're talking in historical terms, but it sounds like maybe the writer of Ruth is thinking about Israel's experience, or the Hebrews' experience, of leaving because of famine and then coming back. Maybe it's a historical connection, maybe it's a theological one, maybe it's a literary one, different scholars vary. But to keep that, sometimes we can put that set of lenses on, or keep that idea in the back of our head, that there's something about Exodus and exile here, which are the two big events in the history of Israel. Is it about establishing or criticizing David's genealogy? Maybe some folks figured out that David has this Moabitus in his genealogy, and they use it against David's line. And so this is to establish that really, you know, Moabite women are okay people too. Maybe it is to minimize the importance of this Moabite woman, because again, Ruth disappears after Chapter 3, verse 16. In either event, whenever you have a genealogy listed, and we only get a little piece in Ruth, but we get a piece, when you have a genealogy listed, it has something to do with the continuity of Israel, with God's promise not only to sustain Abraham's line, but to bless the world through it. There's a piece of genealogy here. Now, that can take us right to Matthew's Gospel. Matthew's Gospel has the genealogy of Jesus that includes Ruth in that genealogy, which is remarkable. In the genealogy of Jesus in Matthew, there are four women listed, and none of them has a particularly savory background. Well, that means something to Matthew, but it also means that God's promise of continuity has continued through Jesus. So is it the genealogy lens? Do we look at this, if we would think about it as a tract for the times, the times might be the time of Ezra and Nehemiah, when they are prohibiting the intermarriage between Jews and non-Jews, when they come back from the exile? And when they are legally forcing Jews who've married non-Jews, Jewish men who've married non-Jewish women, Ezra and Nehemiah demanding that they divorce those women and marry Jewish women? Is this a tract of the times that says, "No, no, see, there's a foreign woman in David's genealogy, it must have been okay." Or is it a tract that says, "See what happens when you let those foreign women in?" I mean, you can read that either way, but there it is. Is it about mixed marriages? Is it about welcoming the stranger, or not? When you cross borders, it's hard not to think about immigration. Naomi and her family are refugees, perhaps. Or perhaps they are wealthy folks who flee from the disaster of the famine, because they have the money and resources to do it. Family relationship lens. I mean, the traditional understanding is that Ruth is devoted to Naomi, she sings this wonderful song, and now it shows up at weddings, you know, Ruth and Naomi cooperating. Or are they competing? At the end of the story, Ruth disappears, and Naomi actually ends up nursing the new I don't write it, I just report it. But there it is. Who actually comes out ahead here? Well, you can read it a couple of ways. There are theological lenses. Naomi asks, "Why?" Naomi is Job in skirts. You know, there's, "Why?" And not only once, not twice, but three times, you know, husband and two sons. What is going on here? "My name's no longer Naomi," which means sweetness, "now my name is Mara," which means So how does God's providence work? Evil and suffering, how does this all work? Ruth is described several times as showing steadfast love, Chesed, which almost always, which is more often a characteristic of God, God who loves steadfastly. I mean, this is one, you know, the Song of Ruth captures that, you know, "Your land would be my land, your people would be my people," and Ruth is approved for that. The twist to that is, of course, this is a foreigner who demonstrates God's, the God of Israel, God's steadfast love. Well, that's a little odd. This starts to sound like the Good Samaritan, or more to the point, the Samaritan woman at the well, in John 4. So what does it mean to be God's people? Is it only a genetic thing? Is Ruth wrong when she says, "Your God is my God, and your people are my people, and your land is mine"? Crossing those kinds of boundaries just didn't happen in the ancient world. You're born what you're born. And when you're born into a particular ethnic group, then you know who your God is. But here we have, you know, is it about inclusion, is it about exclusion? This isn't all the lenses that we can bring to Ruth, which is why we can read this for the next couple of years, if you're up for it. We won't. I'm pretty sure we won't. But these are, this is not the whole list of ways through which people have read and continue to read the Book of Ruth. I know none of you signed up for this much, but there it is. And you know, you should be very afraid. That's only a week's worth of review on my part, you know. Well, thoughts about these lenses? Which of them had occurred to you? Which are surprising or new? Which appeals to you more or less?
Well, you mentioned Naomi's family being well-to-do. But yet, I see Ruth gathering the wheat because of not having anything, needing food. So I guess I'm wondering why Ruth has not shared, or Naomi hasn't shared some of that wealth with her mother-in-law.
Well, several things about that, because that's a good observation. I mean, reading the text closely and asking exactly those kinds of questions is what we have the opportunity to do. Only some scholars think that this migration is due, is possible, because they have wealth. Although, you know, some people move because they can afford to, and some people move because they have to. So it may be one or the other. But if it's because they could afford to, and a number of rabbis commenting on Ruth are critical of Ruth's family, I'm sorry, of Naomi's family, it becomes Ruth's family, but of Naomi's family, because they speculate that Alimelech and Naomi were well off, and they didn't want to share what they had with all these other hungry and struggling people in Bethlehem, and so they left. And therefore, God is punishing that family, that's why Alimelech dies, because he sinned. That's a speculation on the text. But keep in mind, Ruth, that even if they did have the resources to move and resettle and be relatively comfortable, Alimelech, the father of the family, dies fairly early They're in country, in Moab, at least 10 years, and whether they generated income or not, or they just lived off what they had during those 10 years, isn't clear. But they may have spent down their resources to very little. When the women return to the Bethlehem area, you know, the land is still, still belongs to Alimelech's family. Naomi is the wife, she's not the husband. Land belongs primarily to males. It appears that it's under the control of Boaz, or his second cousin, or someone who's there. So even if those resources still existed, Naomi and Ruth might not have been able to access them. Those scholars who think that there's a lot more tension between Naomi and Ruth than we tend to think, they wonder if Naomi was holding out. I don't know about that, but that's a wondering that some scholars have. Some scholars would say, "Why in the world didn't at some point Naomi say to Ruth, 'If we move back, you could end up married to one of these men who has our land.'" Why was that never mentioned? I don't, all I'm saying is, that lens of Ruth and Naomi as more like this than like this raises questions like that. So a long answer, but that's just right as a question. Yeah, Al?
Naomi was rich. Why did Ruth bring back part of her lunch to share with her?
Yeah. If Naomi was rich, you know, why the gleaning, and why the bringing things back, and Boaz is giving extra and all that? Well, it doesn't sound like Naomi was in control of much of anything in terms of resources. That doesn't mean that Alimelech's family was poor. Those may or may not be connected. These questions, we all understand, we don't get to answer these questions, but these questions take us deeper into the possibilities of the story. Yeah, Al, please.
And historically speaking, I was looking at the writer of the book, Solomon, so he had, if he wrote it, some people think he did, some people don't. But if he wrote it, that was before the exile to Babylon, so why would that mimic the exile to Babylon?
Well, if we would place it in the, you know, in the 10th century, in the 900s, you know, in Solomon's time, then exile, no. Exodus, yeah.
Oh, no, not Exodus.
Yeah, as a memory, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Exodus as a memory, yeah.
Yeah, so that still holds. If you would put it at that time, which not many scholars do, but if you would put it at that time, and as a kind of history, you know, that starts to narrow the options for why this is written. Is it, is Solomon making sure this gets written and recorded in order to say that having a foreign woman in David's genealogy is a good thing? Solomon's mother, you know, Solomon's mother doesn't have the best pedigree either. You know, Solomon's mother is Bathsheba, you know, the one that David sees taking a bath on the roof and decides that it's worth a trip next door. You know, does, if we look through that lens, is this a way to make space in David's line for Bathsheba as well? I mean, if this Moabite woman, and Moabite women in Scripture are regarded as not only foreigners, but highly sexualized foreign women, much more than respectable Israelite women would be. And so the fact that Bathsheba acts out sexually, maybe, you know, maybe the point could be, "Well, goodness, if we let this wild and crazy Moabite woman into the line, then you know Bathsheba's not so bad." Could be, could be. I don't think that's the time of composition, but again, no one can say for sure either. And I think that's an interesting lens. And even if Solomon didn't write it, you still can read back through the story with precisely that in mind. You know, whether it's written at that time or not, it can have that purpose. So, I mean, this is, you know, continuing to ask, what's it about? Lovely story, but what's it about?
What was the purpose of writing it?
Right, yeah. And depending on the lens that we adopt, that sort of directs our vision toward perhaps different purposes. And some of those purposes complement each other. I don't think that Ruth was written for just one reason. And some of them contradict each other. And, you know, and this is fodder for continuing PhD dissertations. I mean, this is, you know, job security for graduate supervisors, because, and a text like Ruth in particular is at least as much a mirror as it is a window. That's a lens, and it's not really a lens, but that's a perspective. perspective that's not even listed on the sheet. When we read Ruth, who do we see in the mirror? You know, who do we see in terms of relationships between men and women, in terms of the role of women in our society, in terms of the nature of sexual violence and abuse? That's a whole nother dimension to the reading. Not only what do we see through the text, but what do we see looking back at us? And, and there'll be moments when, when that will, I think, jump out at us.
What I think is interesting is that we're coming from a very patriarchal society back then, but God still had people write about the importance of women in the Bible. Like, started with Eve and her importance with the Garden of Eden, you know, Lot's daughters, you know, and now we're into Ruth. I mean, he still made sure that whoever wrote-
Or she.
Or she. I know, God she, yes. But, you know, that, that women, the importance of women is throughout the whole Bible.
So that's a helpful lens to bring to all of this. And, and that's partly what the feminist lens tries to do. But, but it falls down on, it falls down in one of two directions. You know, Phyllis Tribble, for example, would, would and did agree with you, Carol, that, that these stories of women in the Old Testament are often stories that, that undercut the male authority structure. Ruth and Naomi are partners in a conspiracy to get what, to get their goals met. And, and hooray, they did. The same is true, we'll look at, we'll look at the first Tamar, the Tamar in Genesis, for example, who is kind of the model for subversive women in the Old Testament. So, are these, you know, are these texts of, of subversive power, you know, of, of women being able to assert themselves in the face of this system? On the other hand, some feminist readers would read these texts and say, no, that's really not what's happening. There's a lot of, there's a lot of abuse, there's a lot of male dominance. You know, some of the Old Testament texts, I mean, one of the kind of earlier books on this, you know, Phyllis Tribble writes a book called Texts of Terror. She doesn't read Ruth as a text of terror, but she looks at a half a dozen stories in the Old Testament where women are, women are raped, murdered, dismembered. And, and these are regarded as relatively good things. So, so it's all there. And this is a question in Ruth in particular, you know, is this, is this a text about, about women overcoming this system of, of male domination? And we should, in addition, it's easy to, to kind of overplay the, the male dominance card in the Bible as well, because there are any number of women in the Bible who clearly own property, manage their own money, are able to travel where they choose to go, are, are patrons of Jesus and Paul and, and others. And so, as some feminist writers would say, we should be careful not to completely deprive women in the Bible of, of their agency, their ability to get things done. Is Ruth about women's agency? Is that a part of it? At times, certainly, at times. Is the fact that Ruth and Esther are in the Tanakh and then in our Old Testament, I mean, that certainly says something about, about God's desire that we hear multiple voices and take that seriously, and hear the critiques of, of systems of domination. I mean, we hear some of that same thing in the prophets from a different perspective, but certainly it's a, it's a, it's a critique of that system of domination. And, and the Old Testament in particular, and this is why the disclaimer at the beginning, I mean, these, some of these stories are just absolutely unblinking in their descriptions of the horrific treatment of women at certain points in, in the Old Testament. And then the heroic behavior of women at, at other points. There, there are a number of women who are heroes in the Old Testament. Some would say that, that they are the exceptions that prove the rule. You know, we notice them because it so rarely happens, and that may be true as well. But is that, is that respond to what you were thinking about? Okay.
One of the heroes would be Miriam, you know.
Absolutely, Miriam. Deborah-
Deborah.
-as well. One of the intertestamental books that, that many of us wish would have made it into one canon or another is the Book of Judith, which was a, which you don't know, because you've never read it, I'm sure. But it was a subject of lots of fascination in the Middle Ages and beyond, Judith and Halophanes. Judith, who, who seduces the enemy general, twists him around her little finger, and then kills him, dispatches him with his own sword. You know, a few more stories like that, and people would read the Bible a little more often.
You know, I see Ruth as being strong in her convictions, but I also see her submissive in her actions. And I didn't want to say anything about Moab being abusive to her.
Oh, about Boaz? Well, sometimes, yeah, that's, that's accurate.
And what I read.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. It's not Boaz who, who triggers the issue. It is, in fact, Malan and Chilean, Elimalek's sons, who began the issue. Translators will often make texts nicer than they are. And so, in, in verse four of chapter one, you thought we were getting on to chapter one today, but probably not. In verse four of chapter one, in, in the English translation, NRSB, "These," that is, Malan and Chilean, "these took Moabite wives." Well, that seems pretty innocent, right? Except that the verb there is the same verb that a few chapters earlier in Judges describes the abduction and rape of, of women. The verb that's used there is not the verb for to marry, the verb for took. The verb for took is the same verb that you would use to describe throwing a sack of potatoes over your shoulder and carrying it away. It is a verb that, that not always, but sometimes refers to abduction. Not, this is not a proposal that's being described here. So, so it is, it's hidden in the English text, but it's right there in the Hebrew, and would, and would smack Hebrew listeners right in the mouth. So, you know, this, this is why we, we study, right? Ignorance is bliss. You know, it was a nice story a minute ago. Yeah, Al?
But you're in a foreign country, so if you did that to a foreign woman, that family would seek vengeance.
You'd think so. Yeah, you would think so.
I mean, if they took, like you said.
Yeah, yeah. Now, it is interesting that, you know, how the sons die is not specified. It just says they died.
Would they take the women back then, if that happened?
Well-
And Moabite women.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Back to a family, so I was assuming that it was a more friendly marriage rather than a unfriendly.
It, it may have been. That particular verb doesn't lend itself to that interpretation, but that's not everything. That's right. And we don't know, as we read the text, we don't know. There is a tradition of rabbinic interpretation that, that describes when Orpah leaves, she doesn't make it home, she's murdered on the way. And, and it's really an ugly, icky text, because there's things that happened before she's murdered. But that's, that's not being done as kind of a sociological tract. The, the rabbis who have that interpretation, and I don't remember if it's in the Mishnah or the, or where it is, but this is, this happens because, because Orpah's seen as unfaithful, and Ruth is faithful. And, and then Orpah's punished. A lot of the rabbinic interpret, a lot, some of the rabbinic interpretation looks at what happens, and it must be punishment for something. I mean, this is one strand in, in that line of thinking, that if something bad happens, it's because you did something bad. You know, you know, why does Elimalek die? Well, he took all his money with him instead of feeding his hungry neighbors back in Bethlehem. You know, why, why does Orpah, you know, what happens to Orpah? Well, she left, she must have, she must have died. You know, Malan and Chilean, I mean, they must, you know, they married foreign women, for crying out loud. Well, I don't know that any of that stands up to our scrutiny, but it has made sense to some readers. Now, your point, okay, here they are, they're in a- How in the world could they get away with this? Well, in the ancient Middle East, rape marriage, as in rape-dash-marriage, was not untypical. And particularly, if it did happen to be across ethnic lines. The way that that typically happened, though, is that you defeated an enemy in battle, killed all the males, the women. That in this sociological context, that it was simply the expected thing, which is why there wasn't. There would have been violent consequences if they hadn't married them. So shotgun weddings are not new. But you don't pull the trigger if they get married. Yeah, again, yeah, maybe. Well, I mean, this, this conversation, you can't get very far into these Old Testament women's stories without talking about exactly these kinds of things. So, good points, Al. But that, that verb is hard to get around in verse four. Yeah, Jan?
Where did you say that verb was used?
It's in Judges, it's, it's right at the end of Judges. And so, in, in the Christian canon, I'd have to go back and check my sources here, but in the Christian canon, it's just a chapter or two before the beginning of Ruth. So, so the connection is hard to miss. Typically, that verb is used of things, not people, like a sack of potato, not that they carried potatoes in the Old Testament, but, you know, a sack of grain. Typically, it's used of things. And so, taking a wife with that verb is like, is like taking a bag of grain, not like getting down on one knee and proposing.
So is that Levite story?
Yeah, yeah, it's the Levite concubine is the place.
Chapter 19.
Yeah. So it's not very far from that. You know, again, is this for sure? Yeah, Al?
Could it be bought?
Could it mean bought?
Yeah.
Hmm.
I don't know.
Well-
I mean, he bought her, if you, if it's taking, if you buy something and you take it, he could have bought her.
So on the one hand, we can be virtually certain that there was an exchange of money. I mean, this is just part of the deal. And different cultures do it different ways. Sometimes the money comes, comes to the family receiving the bride as a way to pay for some of the upkeep. Sometimes the money goes to the bride's family because you're getting property. But the point is, marriage is a property contract between families, you know, much more than it is some kind of covenant between the man and the woman. And typically, a bride price is negotiated by the families and then exchanged. And it may well be that, that these girls just, is probably pretty certain these girls didn't have much say in it. Because, because they were property of the males in their family, and now they become property of these other males. Remember, in the Old Testament in particular, but I think in the New Testament in many ways too, adultery is regarded as a property crime. It's one man stealing the sexual access to a woman from another man. That's what adultery is. It's a sin of one man against another. It's a property crime. That's not everything that it is, but that's a significant part of what it is. So was, were they bought? I mean, yeah, I think they were paid for, and that wouldn't have been unusual. Does that verb say that? No, not, not so much. But I think you can presume that that was part of the transaction. And again, if, I, I think that if you properly execute that contract, you know, then it may be a shotgun wedding, but nobody gets killed. On the other hand, you know, maybe they just, maybe they waited. You know, maybe they were very patient. But the narrator, I think, gives us some clues that that probably isn't what happened, that they probably weren't murdered. Because, what was it, Malan means, I can't remember which is which. One of the boys is named sickly, weak and sickly, and the other one is named pining or wasting away. Now, I, I, you know, none of you named your children sickly or pining away. I mean, this is not really what, you know, this does not express parental hopes, I don't think. Maybe these names are symbols for the fact that the sons were sick, and they were sickly and died as a result. But these, these are, these, these are not names like Boaz. Boaz means strong, like bull. That's what Boaz means. As a matter of fact, one of the main pillars in the Jerusalem temple, in Solomon's temple, was called Boaz. One of the pillars in the temple was named Boaz, because it means strong. So are there clues even in, oh, I made a list of the names now that I think about. Are there clues even in the names of the characters? And again, you know, unless we are Hebrew speakers, or we do a lot of studying, we're not gonna, we're not gonna catch those. Where'd I put that? I mean, Elimalek is pretty simple, you know, God is king. Naomi means sweetness. Ruth means friend or companion. Orpah, Orpah means the back of the neck, which is what you see when someone leaves. Yeah, you know, Malan and Chilean, weak, weak and sickly, Boaz, strong. I mean, are these names clues as to what the writer intends us to see of these characters? And if that's the case, it starts to sound more like a folk tale than history. And if that's the case, it starts to sound more like a folk tale than history. Uh, and it certainly starts out that way. Uh, y- you can almost hear the, "Once upon a time, there was a man." You know, it's not written that way, but there was a man. Uh, you know, Jonah starts out the same way. Uh, there was this, there was this fellow named Jonah. You know, it starts right in the middle of things. Now, which is not how history usually starts, but how fairy tales do.
Those meanings, did they come before or after?
Well, that's, oh, boy, is that a complicated question. I mean, it's a good question. Uh, you know, the bigger question is, is there a kind of a composition history for the book of Ruth? Uh, yes. Is this, uh, is this a, a story that is told around the campfires? Or, uh, you know, to, from grandmas to grandchildren or something like that for several generations before it's put into writing? Uh, could easily be. Uh, is it rooted in, uh, specific historical, uh, incidents? Uh, could easily be. Uh, may well be that it begins in history and becomes more of, of a folk tale or tract for the times. So that, that there's a process of development that may have gone from Solomon to Ezra and Nehemiah. I mean, this, this is, uh, that's almost six hundred years. You know, the stories develop for a while and then they solidify into, into a piece. I mean, you know, uh, if somebody messes with Cinderella's story, we know it. Right? If somebody changes it, we know it, nobody, because that's not right. It's not how it's supposed to be. Well, I, what do you mean, that's not how it's supposed to be? Well, it's not how we, we don't change it anymore. Some scholars are certain that the book of Ruth is the combination of two pre-existing stories, one about Ruth and one about Naomi. Because sometimes Ruth's in charge and sometimes Naomi is, and sometimes Naomi's talking and sometimes Ruth is, and hardly ever at the same time. And then Ruth just disappears at, in three sixteen and, and we don't really hear about her again very much. Is this a skillful knitting together of a couple of stories that were originally independent? Well, maybe. Does that really matter at this point? It matters to, to textual scholars and critics, but it doesn't really matter to us very much. But the point, Jan, is that was there a composition history? Did they maybe have different names and, and, and then they get these character names to give us clues? That could be, that could be. I don't know, uh, but it certainly could be. Yes, Al?
So is this written after the time of David and by a person by the name of Patterson? To make the story look better for David's lineage?
This is one of the questions. You know, this is one of the questions. If, if genealogy, if establishing David's genealogy is the goal, uh, knowing that there's this, this, uh, hot and uncontrollable Moabite woman in, you know, in, in the mix, uh, if that's the goal, it, it accomplishes that. If the goal is simply to point out that there's this Moabite woman that's in there because we're, uh, we're from Israel, not Judah, and we think that David's line is illegitimate, you could use it to establish that too. If what you want to say to Ezra and Nehemiah is, great King David had a great grandmother who was from Moab, so why in the world is it a problem that we are marrying foreign women? You can establish that too. Uh, yeah, I, I think there's probably more evidence for that than the other perspectives, but it doesn't rule the others out. There isn't just one reason for this. And, and the tale, it, you know, the story of Ruth has lived longer than any of the reasons. Maybe it had one kind of reason at one point in history and another kind of reason at another, and a quite different reason in the time of Matthew, when Ruth is in Jesus' genealogy. You know, I, I, you know, Solomon wouldn't have cared about that, and Ezra and Nehemiah wouldn't have cared about that. But we do. Uh, Matthew did. Uh, so that the story, uh, it really outlives some of the issues. And it's important to keep that in mind too. And it has outlived and it continues. Well, here we are. We're reading it, huh? You know, and, uh, and we aren't necessarily terribly concerned about Jesus' genealogy the way Matthew was. But it still speaks to us. It has outlived that particular concern. So, I, well, you know, that's the kind of answer you get from me. I, you know, I, never a yes or a no for crying out loud. You know, doesn't Hennings ever read scripture where Jesus says, "Let your yes be yes and your no be no"? There are some parts I just choose to ignore. Well, I think that, that my task of complexifying things is going along rather nicely here. But I, I think, you know, we're, we're all grownups. We don't, we don't need to read this in just one way. And if we, and if we do, there are other people who can do a lot better job of that than I can. Uh, I'll, I'll get bored and, and won't be able to do it. Uh, so, uh, holy cow. I, I would encourage you to just keep this sheet as a reminder of that there's a variety of re- ways to read the text. And this is not an exhaustive list by any means. Uh, some of these lenses will apply as we do our intertextual work. I mean, it's not gonna be very long, and we're gonna need to look at, uh, Tamar, for example, in Genesis thirty-eight. And at some point, we will certainly, when we get to the threshing floor, then we have to look at the Samaritan woman in John four because there are these, uh, remarkable connections and parallels. And Jesus and the Samaritan woman are talking, and it's almost like Ruth is standing in the background watching. Uh, yeah, Al.
It's a little off the subject, but how does this?
Well, how can we tell?
How does the study of Ruth, uh, mean what we're supposed to do today about the call of people coming up from Gwalungu always?
Oh, yeah. Right, I mean, you can't, it's not off topic at all. I mean, we're talking about migrations, right? We're talking about economic migration, without question. Um, but, uh, Ruth and Naomi, well, Alimelech and his family are not the first economic migrants in the Bible. Abraham comes from Ura the Chaldees, which is Babylon, which is Baghdad, basically. Uh, yes, God calls Abraham and Sarah to go to the land that they've not seen. But we know, uh, from archaeology that they are part of a massive, uh, economic migration from, uh, the fertile cr- from the Tigris Euphrates Valley, uh, through Israel to the south. In, in about two thousand or so BCE, uh, there's a huge movement of people. Well, uh, there, there were no nation-states at that point. Uh, borders were, uh, uh, more mythical than real, and they were very porous for the most part. But God takes advantage of, makes use of this massive economic dislocation to get Abraham and Sarah from one place to another. Well, what, I mean, what does that mean for how we look at this caravan? Uh, you know, we, okay, that particular thing, uh, you know, that makes great pictures on the evening news. Um, uh, I mean, people are economically displaced all over the, I mean, you know, what is it, forty, fifty million? I mean, the greatest, this is the greatest, we're, we're living in the midst of the greatest economic migration in human history, uh, as we speak. Well, what does that, what does that mean? I, Ruth, the book of Ruth by itself raises the question, but I, but I don't think answers it. But it should give us pause that nowhere, you know, nowhere does God say Moabites. I mean, not in Ruth. Uh, elsewhere, yeah, but not, not, nowhere in Ruth does God say, you know, Moabites. Well, as a matter of fact, God doesn't say anything in Ruth. God is mentioned several times, but God never says a thing in Ruth. But nowhere is there this sense that, yeah, no, foreigners, mm-mm, can't come across the line. On the other hand, Ruth's reception back in Bethlehem is, is, there's no refugee resettlement committee waiting for her. They don't, they don't even, the, the women of Bethlehem don't even acknowledge that she exists. They're happy to see Naomi, but they don't say a thing about Ruth until she produces a baby. Uh, until she produces an heir. Well, I mean, how, what, what does that say about how we all deal with strangers or not? It's not so simple. It's not so simple. Nor, and, and again, there are people who think it's their job to simplify issues around immigration, migration, refugees. And that's the worst thing we can do. This is complex. And to simplify it is to get it wrong. And to assume that one perspective, whichever perspective it is, is the right one, i- is, is not gonna get it right. Now, I, you know, I could easily be accused of being hamlet, you know, to be and not to be, you know, it's, you know, uh, on the one hand, on the other hand, you know, God save us from two-handed theologians. I mean, uh, but I just, I, I think simplifying these things, it, it gets people killed. And, uh, a- and that should create concern for us. So, does this tell us what to do about the caravan? No. Does it raise these questions and make us uncomfortable about them? It should. In that sense, I don't think that it's accurate to call the book of Ruth a parable quite in the way that, for example, I, Jonah is more of a parable, more of an allegory, or something in there. Uh, I don't, I don't think Ruth functions in that way. It doesn't break down as simply. When you get to the end of Jonah, and God, and God speaks in Jonah, of course. When you get to the end of Jonah and, and God says, "And shouldn't I worry about these people in Nineveh, you know, who know neither their right hand from their left?" And Jonah ends with a question mark. Uh, that, that's, that's more of a parable. This is more of a folk tale that can go a lot of different directions. But it functions like a parable in that it raises questions that make us squirm and doesn't give us answers. You know, when, when we really read Jesus' parables in, uh, in the way they are instead of the way that we want them to be, they do the same thing. They raise questions, don't give clean answers, and leave us squirming. And that's what they intend to do. Uh, so when, when we're done with Ruth, whenever we can't stand her any longer, we'll, we should be prepared to walk away with many more questions than answers and, uh, and, and also then to think that as a result, you got your money's worth, even, even though you didn't get a lot of answers, I mean, because that's what Ruth, uh, does. So thoughts about that, Al?
Well, maybe we should kill the man and send the women back to Gwalungu. Well, that's, well, we'd be the Moabites.
Uh, or.
See, we'd be the Moabites.
Or, or any of the.
Killed the man and the women went back to Gwal- uh, went back to Israel.
Yeah, yeah. Well, or any of those ancient kingdoms. That was, that was not, well, they wouldn't have sent them back, they'd have kept them.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, uh, yes, uh, I mean, that was the typical battle strategy because you don't want to, you don't want to continue to staff your neighbor's army. Now, of course, breaks down, uh, unless you really think that that's an invading army, and I do not.
No, I don't.
Then the analogy really breaks down at that point. But, but we, we should be prepared for, uh, you know, uh, a fair bit of bloody-mindedness on the part of these ancient peoples and also be prepared to acknowledge that they're not so different from us. Bloody-mindedness has not gone away. Uh, I mean, it may have different tools, but, uh, but it certainly hasn't gone away. So keep coming back to that one, Al, because these questions of immigration and economic dislocation, I mean, that's what drives the plot, if nothing else. Uh, and economics drive the concerns that get them to Boaz, for example. How are we gonna eat? And what? And for how long? I mean, so, so that's there and it does not go away. Other thoughts before we finish?
Yeah, I missed the discussion, how did, how did Ruth and Naomi compete?
Oh, this is one of the feminist lenses. And particularly, those readers focus, uh, they focus particularly on Ruth's, uh, production of the heir. You know, Ruth has a child. And at that point, uh, Ruth disappears pretty much from the narrative. The child is not only on Naomi's lap, but Naomi is treated by the women of Bethlehem not as the grandmother, but as the mother. Uh, and in fact, is portrayed as nursing this child. So that, from that perspective, Ruth is seen as almost sort of the, of a surrogate. And, and it's.
She nursed a child, she had no.
You know, it's in the script. I mean, I understand the question, but I didn't write it. Uh, which is a complicated way, my job, of saying, "I don't know."
He hired a nursemaid, yeah.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
Wet nurse.
Yeah, I mean, this would take us, of course, back to the Exodus. Because this is precisely how Moses' mother functions for Pharaoh's daughter. Um, but that's, that's the particular incident that those readers would focus on, that really Naomi's goal all along was, was to get a son for Alimelech and continue the line. And so, uh, Ruth is a means to her end, but, um, and, you know, and Ruth's, uh, and then from that lens, Ruth's pro- you know, Ruth's declaration of faithfulness really is more on the basis of, uh, "Any old port in a storm." Uh, uh, you know, uh, or, "I don't know how it went for Orpah when she went home, but boy, it's not gonna work out very well for me, and so, uh, you know, I, at least I know where my next meal ticket might be." I think, I think that ends up really being kind of a strained reading. I'm not sure that's the best lens. Uh, but it, all, but it is one through which some feminist scholars, uh, look. And then there's, there's kind of a, uh, politics of suspicion that sets in that this really was written by a man who, who really likes to just set women against each other. Uh, which, you know, uh, there's a fair bit of that that goes on in literature. Uh, you know, men who like to write about women in conflict. Uh, you know, if there's gonna, if there're gonna be women fighting in a text, it should be women who write the script. At least. So the point is not necessarily asserting that they were in competition, but some people read it that way. I don't find that a very convincing reading, I, I will say. Some of these lenses, I, I find more convincing than others. And you are free, of course, to pick and choose as well, you know, which would be more or less, uh, convincing. None of these is the, the right answer, because we don't know what, what the, the right answer, uh, will be.
You could pick up your own.
Well, that's called, yeah, that's called midrash.
Well, maybe Ruth died.
Yeah, maybe.
She died in childbirth, and so Naomi had to raise.
Maybe she died in childbirth, and so Naomi had to raise the child.
Yeah, yeah. Um--
Maybe not, or maybe it was--
Well, I just want, I would wanna, I would just wanna, I don't have the whole text committed to memory in terms of just the timeline--
Yeah.
But at some point, uh, the reason I say that's called midrash is because there is an honored, uh, tradition within Jewish interpretation, where you take the basic story, and then you keep writing. And that's a way of, uh, not only interpreting the text, but also of entertaining your audience. Uh, I mean, in a sense, in a sense, in a sense, this is what Christian preaching is. You know, it's starting with the text and, and expanding. So, uh, so there are, there are lovely midrashim, that's the plural of midrash, on Ruth and Naomi. Some of, some still being written today. So, yes, could you take the story and take off from there, and would that be a helpful interpretive tool? It could be.
Well, you can do it with a tuck, you can do it with anything.
Yeah, absolutely.
So did Boaz and Alimelech, did they have the same last family name? I mean, how did--
No, they were spread a little further apart than that, but they'd be in the same clan.
Okay, 'cause when you're talking about Naomi getting that respect from, you know, perpetuating his lineage, you know, I was confused with where it was Ruth and Boaz--
Right.
--that produced the son.
We'll talk about the role of what's called leverate marriage, uh, as, and how that works in Ruth. You know, that institution, it's an Old Testament institution, a Middle Eastern institution. It's mentioned most clearly when Jesus has his conversation about the resurrection with the Sadducees, and they spin this tale, you know, a woman has a husband, he dies, she marries a brother, he dies, she marries a brother, uh, seven times. The institution they're describing is leverate marriage, where a brother takes on the responsibility to ensure the continuance of the other brother's lineage, and, and presumably property. Now, is that exactly what's happening in Ruth? No, not exactly. There's, there's a little, uh, Boaz acts as a, uh, what's called, uh, the, the label is a, a goel. He acts as protector, uh, initially. Now, that becomes a marriage, primarily because of the initiative, Naomi and Ruth. Perhaps Boaz is of such an age, like, like many men, and you get to a certain age, and you make no rash moves of any kind. You know? So we'll talk more about how that institution actually works in, in Ruth, and how it doesn't. But ultimately, the, Alimelech's lineage is, in the story anyway, it's sustained, and his land and property remain within, uh, within his fam, they're not alienated from his family, and that's part of the goal of that strategy. You wanted to say, Sherry?
Well, just that that was made possible by Ruth. And I think, you know, our mentality is that it's my child, and I think it was more, uh, more their philosophy of it takes a village. So I guess I saw that as the ultimate love for Naomi. We don't know that Naomi nursed that baby. We don't know that. I mean, at least I don't understand it that way, but we--
Well--
But even if Ruth was--
The child was placed in Naomi's bosom.
That's what it--
Yeah. Now, I mean, does that mean she nursed it? Some readers, some readers say yes, and some would say, "No, this is what grandmas do."
But with that, that also, regardless of how that happened, who had possession of the child, that would have been the ultimate love, because, I mean, not only for Naomi, but for the child, because this child would be a, a foreigner still, a half-breed as such.
Yeah, right.
And so, and in this way, her child is also given a place, a right that can't be taken away.
Of course, you can read it, yeah, you can--
Because Boaz was the father--
That's one way to read it. You can read against that, however, because Ruth really disappears from the text at 3:16. Naomi comes to the fore, and is the goal of the text to simply erase Ruth at that point and make that child not a half-breed.
Yeah. But it doesn't mean she didn't exist, but she wasn't there.
Well, we know that, but what's the author's intention? Yeah, we don't know. I mean, but you can read even that in, in directions that cut in completely opposite ways. And again, the question is, you know, which do you find not only most compelling, but which is, which is edifying? You know, which you find most helpful as well? And, and I think most of us, we find the more positive, constructive relationships with, that, we would really like Ruth, we'd like it to end with they lived happily ever after. We'd really like that.
But it didn't, but--
No, probably not.
She had to make sacrifices, and I think probably that was the ultimate sacrifice, but also, I, I can't think that that love and that faithfulness between Naomi and Ruth disappeared.
Well, we shall see, huh? We'll pick it up at, uh, at chapter two next time, and we'll--
Gee, I thought we'd gone through four.
I thought we had two.
Well, you understand that just because we read chapter two doesn't mean we're done with chapter one, and it doesn't mean that we won't go to chapter four, and Genesis, and Matthew, and--
Ezra.
Ezra, yeah, I mean, this is, you know? So let's pray and be done, huh? Gracious God, your word is deeper than we can fathom, and yet you invite us and you equip us to dive in. And so, Lord, in this conversation, make us good swimmers. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.